Welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of December the 16th, 2024. Please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement has been waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for today nor planned for a future agenda, and we ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today is a reminder that due to Christmas and New Year holidays, city council will not meet on December 23rd and 30th. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
Is there anyone here to present an item on the consent agenda? If so, please come forward. Good afternoon and welcome.
TJ McDowell, the mayor's office. Good evening, city council members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Hassan Khalil. I only recently got to know Hassan myself, but we bonded quickly. He owns a barber shop at 30th and Holdridge, which is in my old neighborhood where I grew up, and as you can see, we both have very good barbers.
Similar hairstyles.
The mayor is nominating Hassan to serve on the Multicultural Advisory Committee, commonly referred to as MAC. MAC serves as an advisory capacity to the mayor and city council. Councilor Shob is currently the city council rep on the MAC. Hassan will be an excellent member of MAC. He was born in Iraq. Just a few highlights about his life. He spent 11 years in a Syrian refugee camp. He moved to the United States in 1999, first to New York, and then to Nebraska in 2010. He recently completed the My City Academy program to learn more about becoming civically involved. This year, he voted for the first time. You might have seen the Journal Star article about his voting and him recruiting other folks to register and vote, and he's actively involved in youth soccer. And I ask that you support Hassan's nomination. He will make an outstanding contribution to our city on MAC.
Thank you guys so much. It's my honor to be here. Thank you, city council members. Thank you, TJ. It's my honor to meet you and to be invited to be part of this committee. I'm so excited. I will take any questions.
Well, Mr. Khalil, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Let's see if councillors have questions for you. Any questions?
No questions, just a big thank you.
Yeah, I did tell you that I would ask you the same five questions you asked of me during My City Academy, but I will actually not do that. I am really pleased that you want to give your energy to the city of Lincoln. Thank you so very much.
I really appreciate it. My honor. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Stephen.
Welcome.
Evening, council members. Gary Berkstrom, Air Quality Section Supervisor for the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. I'm here just to speak briefly on the nominated appointments to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board. First, I believe Eric Barth had planned on being here tonight, but unfortunately wasn't able to be here. But he'd be in... Oh, there you go. I'm sorry.
I will introduce Eric then. I walked right by him. So apologies. Eric is currently employed with Monolith. Those Monolith Materials? As an environmental coordinator down there. I'll let... I'll turn it over to Eric to kind of let him introduce himself a bit.
Yeah, so like Gary said, well, first of all, good evening. I'm Eric Barth. I am the current senior manager for environmental in... or at Monolith, my office down in Hallam, but obviously we have a headquarters here in Lincoln, which I'm sure all of you are more than familiar with. I've spent the last 13-plus years in environmental compliance, all in this area, Lincoln Lancaster County. Have been involved with air permitting in Nebraska, Wyoming, Iowa, South Dakota. My job's kind of taken me all throughout the Midwest, so I feel like I'm more than prepared for this board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do any councillors have questions or comments?
No, thank you, Eric.
Thanks so much for your willingness to serve Lincoln.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Other than that, I would just briefly introduce thoroughly not here tonight, reappointments of Jocelyn Litke and Priyush Shivastav to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board. They've been on the advisory board for several years now, some really great individuals to have on the board, really provide valuable insights to the board, and we're happy to see that they've been nominated to continue serving, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for coming forward, Mr. Berkstrom.
Yep.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to present an item on consent agenda? And if not, is there anyone?
Madam Chair, just real quick, appointed personal privilege while he's in the room, and this is our last meeting of the year, I also just wanted the record to reflect our gratitude to TJ McDowell for his service to the city of Lincoln.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weber. Well played. Would anyone here today like to speak on an item either in support or in opposition to a consent agenda item? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on our consent agenda. Item 1A is appointing Eric Barth to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board for a term to expire September 1st of 2027, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments? Madam Clerk.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is appointing Hassan Khalil to the mayor's Multicultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire September 18th of 2027, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is reappointing Jocelyn Litke and Priyush Shivastav to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board for terms to expire September 1st, 2027, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Carlson, second. Discussion? Madam Clerk.
Shob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is reappointing Chelsia Johnson to the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board for a term to expire December 31st of 2027, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Carlson, second. Discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Duden.
No.
Carlson.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 1E is approving a professional services agreement supplement, number four, for preliminary engineering services between the city of Lincoln and Olson Inc. for 84th Street and US 6 intersection safety project, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1F is resolution leaving the assessment approved by the city councils sitting as Board of Equalization on December 9th, 2024, and setting the interest rate on those assessments for the cost of improvements in the downtown management business improvement district, downtown core management business improvement district, downtown maintenance district, and the West Hay Market downtown maintenance district, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Items... oops, excuse me. 2A through 2C is introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Please call the roll.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. That concludes consent. Let's move forward to liquor resolutions.
Section 4 is public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call items 4A and 4B together. Item 4A and B is application of Restaurante La Union LLC, doing business as Restaurante La Union for a Class I liquor license located at 844 South Street, and the related manager application of Miriam D. Lopez.
The microphones are either...
I would be serving as an interpreter for her.
Yes, I remember.
¿Mi nombre es Miriam López? My name is Miriam Lopez. ¿El nombre del restaurante es? Restaurante La Union. The restaurant is La Union, Restaurante La Union.
Can you tell us a little bit about your application?
Dime poquito de tu aplicación. Sí, pues ya la primera vez. Si se acuerdan de mí, ya hemos aplicado la primera vez. Y pues estoy de vuelta aquí para aplicar de vuelta por la licencia. Okay, so I don't know if you recall, I was here before, but I'm here again. I had to reapply, unfortunately, so I'm here again. Cuéntales sobre tu restaurante que lo que hace. Sí, pues vendemos pura comida mexicana, salvadoreña, y también americana porque vendemos hamburguesa y papa. Okay, so I will be serving Mexican dishes as well as Salvadorian, and of course, American, because we do have hamburgers.
Are you open for business?
Ya, ¿estás abierto para el negocio? Sí.
Yes. Okay. And were you able to complete the training?
¿Completaste el entrenamiento? Sí.
Yes. All right. Any other questions from council members? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is... I guess we can call then... Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item either in support or in opposition? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's call the next item.
I'll call item 4C and 4D together. Application of Kornosk State Fine Wine and Spirits LLC, doing business as Total Wine Spirits Beer &amp; More for a Class C liquor license located at 6400 O Street, Suite 300, and the related manager application of Jim Lefredo.
Good evening to the council. Rob Feuthy, Fraser Striker Law Firm, 500 Energy Plaza in Omaha. Have with me Jim Lefredo, who is our manager as well. Just a couple of quick comments and happy to answer any questions that the council has as well. This will be Total Wine's second store in Nebraska. The Omaha store opened up in November. This one's currently set to open up first half of next year, kind of a moving target with construction, as you can imagine. As far as... I know folks have been in Total Wine before, but I got to go on the one in the Omaha store. It was breathtaking, I guess I'd say. Just some stats about us, 8,000 wines, 3,000 spirits, 2,500 beers. There's a classroom for taking classes on mixing drinks or pouring wine or tasting wine. I know you got red and white, and that's about all the knowledge I've got. Approximately a $3 million investment in the building. This is going to be at the old Sears location at the Gateway Mall, so taking that over. Rough justice, approximately 50 employees will work there. Usually about 75% of them are full-time employees. Benefits are provided as well, so it's a great company to work for, and we're looking forward to being in Lincoln.
All right. Welcome to Lincoln. Are there any questions for this applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in support or in opposition to this application? Anyone wishing to speak? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's call the next items.
I'll call item 4E and 4F together. Application of Res LLC, doing business as Moran's Liquor Works for a Class C GK liquor license located at 3400 A Street, and the related manager application of Lori Rezak.
Okay. Welcome back.
Again, this worked out great. Rob Feuthy, 500 Energy Plaza in Omaha, on behalf of the applicant, Res LLC. I have with me Lori Rezak, who's our owner and store manager as well. She's an experienced operator as well. This is basically an ownership change of the Moran's Liquor Works. There's no change at all that is being done to the operations of the establishment. Now, the one item I wanted to flag for the council was the zoning issue, which... Yeah. And so, and we've been working with the planning department and the city attorney's office. They've been great to deal with as we try to get this thing figured out. I believe the plan is that along with one of the other building or property owners in the area, there's a desire to apply for a PUD in the near future as well, which I think will resolve the liquor... or the scope of service issue as well. The one thing I wanted to ask the council for your consideration on this... So Moran's has had a... under the prior ownership, has had a unlimited on their Class C license as far as what they've been able to do. The proposal, I think, from the city attorney's office was to limit it just to tastings as well. That, you know, in my mind, the zoning issue is... The zoning issue, and we're going to have to deal with it one way or the other, but it would be my desire just to save my clients some time and some money to have the license go through without any restriction on it, so that way we don't have to come back afterwards. We get the zoning issue figured out and, you know, reapply or expand the scope of service at that point as well, just kind of self-executes once the zoning issue is figured out. So again, we're not asking to expand the operations that Moran has had over the last 10-plus years or however long they've been there. We just basically want the exact same license that they've had to date.
Okay. Would you mind describing the license that they've had to date? I don't think that I... It's not top of my mind, and I'm sure it's not the top of mind of anyone else in their room today.
Sure. It's a Class C license, so on-premise and off-premise sales. So it's... The store is primarily a bottle shop liquor store, but there's a small growler room in the back where people can get pours of alcohol as well that are available for purchase. I think there's four or five bar stools back there. So it's not a huge part of the business at all, but it's been there, as far as we know, the entire time the store's been opened as well. So we... You know, the current license for the old ownership does not have any restriction on it, and so my thought process is let's just approve the Class C license for the new ownership, which would be the same restrictions on the liquor license that it has, and we will get this zoning issue squared away down the road, but I just don't want to have to, you know, have her come back for another hearing to approve something that I think has been okay broadly with the city for a while, just not... Just need to get the zoning issue figured out.
Okay. I think we may want to call our attorneys forward, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Because I think there's... This was a request for a C, a G, and a K license, so that's the on-off sales, growler, and catering is what you've applied for.
Yes, I believe they've had the same since.
Okay, I'm not sure they had all three.
Okay.
But let's find out, so...
Yep.
Well, we could do both.
Who would you like to speak with first?
Let's start with planning and zoning. Director Carey. We may need our investigator as well, but good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon still. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 5x5 South 10th Street.
Okay. Could you explain a little bit the zoning issue?
Yeah, so the... I think the reality of this is that this establishment is a existing non-conforming use that cannot meet the separation that's part of the regulation in the zoning for sale of alcohol. So I think to break it down, what we are talking about is what breadth of the activity that they want to get a new license for the new owner allows for. So I will let you know that the concept, the idea of a PUD has been under discussion. It is not... At this moment in time, it's not ready to come forward. You know, we don't really know when it will come forward, so I think that's something for you to consider here. But yes, a PUD could be an avenue to address this issue more fully and allow that the operation that's being requested, the full operation that's being requested, to be allowed through the PUD approval process, but that is not before you today, right now, and it's not... I would say, you know, I think everybody would agree, it's not ready to come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carey, thanks for coming forward. You started with, this is a non-conforming existing business, and we all hear the word grandfathered in. How does this non-conforming business function if it's non-conforming?
Sure. And I think Investigator Parker is also in the back. He might be able to help me fill in the blanks of the details of all the different levels and layers of kind of how we got here. But I think really where we're at is that we're talking about the amount of tasting that is taking place and is requested to continue to take place that is in addition to what technically has been allowed formally, I should say. So I think that's the differentiation between what the applicant would like to be able to continue to do and what at this time the city... What staff is recommending to you what the city should approve or not approve.
That didn't clear it up a whole lot for me.
So we get into full pours versus tasting of product.
Tasting, volume of serve.
And what's the existing license that Moran's had before the ownership change?
Right, and I think Investigator Parker might be able to help me more on that front as far as the breaking it down, where we're at with that.
And I believe I jumped in front.
No, no, you're...
Councilman Duden.
Didn't we have the same issue come up with the grocery store, 52nd and O Street? The guy bought it. Liquor license there, but then he couldn't get it because Gateway Manor had bought the property that was adjacent to that.
Similar fact pattern, not exactly the same. This one in particular is talking about what is allowed, what's technically allowed, and what's been... What the activity has been happening on the site, so I don't know.
But I think on that one, we denied it.
Correct. They currently do not... They still do not sell alcohol at that site.
Investigator Parker, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening or afternoon. Investigator Parker, 575 South 10th Street. So to answer your question, Moran's of Old had the same licenses as Moran's applicant.
And as a part of that license for the growler, what was the amount of pour they could offer?
So really what the issue is here is the Class C. The growler is meant to be consumed off-site, so it would be obviously larger than one ounce to be consumed at home or something like that. Historically, I wasn't in my position, I think it was like nine years ago or so, when the liquor license of Moran's of Old was established, so I can't really speak to what zoning looked like at that point in time, but the understanding that I took away from it in city law may be better to answer this if I get it wrong, was the idea that it was going to be limited to tastings under that Class C umbrella, and I guess it depends on how it's defined by... Well, it is defined by the Liquor Control Commission, and the implementation of that, if there was a misunderstanding or miscommunication, or it just wasn't talked about, I don't... I can't speak to that.
We have a definition, I think, of tastings here in front of us. Shall not exceed more than five samples of one fluid ounce or less of alcoholic liquor by the same person in a 24-hour period.
Correct.
How is that monitored? I mean, we don't... I mean, this is all the honor system, correct?
Well, it's something that the enforcement side can either be by the state or us as a department as we walk in for our tavern selectives that we commonly do with liquor establishments. If there's anything beyond the scope, that would be considered a tavern violation, and it would be sent on to the state.
Okay. Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For everyone at the dice... Moran's exists now. It's sitting there on 30th... It's sitting there on 33rd, just past, just past, just east of 33rd. The operations they're doing now, are they currently non-conforming? And how does their application differ from what we do, what is currently existing?
The sale of alcohol at that location in a general sense, let's forget about there's tastings and full pours happening on-site, it's non-conforming. It can't meet the regulations that are on the books right now. But they exist already so that non-conforming use can continue as long as they're not, there isn't an expansion or a change, a significant change to the operation.
And does the sale of the building constitute a significant change?
No.
And what is being expanded? We have a conditional approval here based on some rules.
There's, there's no change in the operations. I don't think they've done any construction to the building. It was kind of a turnkey situation.
But in your testimony, you asked us to allow something to continue until another option was available. That sounded like you were doing, you were changing.
Well, going back and forth, Planning Department, I'm having a little difficulty understanding as well exactly kind of what the issue is. The core result that we want is for Moran's to continue to operate as it has under the prior owner, which has involved more than single pour tastings at the, in the growler room in the back. So I don't, I don't think anything in our application sought to limit what Moran's had previously done, nor did it seek to expand it. It was basically Moran's old owner is running it like X, Moran's new owner is going to run it like X.
Business as usual.
Yes.
And I, I'm going to try to clarify, and maybe City Attorney might need to step in.
You're on deck.
What has been identified in this application process is the, the limitation on the current license for the full pours is what should have been happening. And so that's what is being identified as being a, what should be limited if we're going to move forward with this.
The sampling is what should have been happening and has not.
Correct.
And that is where we're trying to move toward through a PUD process potentially.
And perhaps other things too, but yes, that would have to be addressed with the PUD.
Yeah. At the end of the day, we just want to do what we've been doing or what the store has been doing previously and how we get to Rome, which road we take, doesn't really matter, but we'll figure it out.
And I think my concern is what they have been doing today was been a little bit outside of what we found acceptable, and we want to remind you of that and bring it back into the house, back, back into the rules of acceptability.
Understood, yes.
But I'm going to, I did not go to law school. As someone who did go to law school, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, please.
I guess I'll try as, as well, but I really just wanted to add, I don't, whatever the council approved today, if the council, I think Law Department proposed the tastings definition in there, if that was approved, I just wanted to clear up, they would not, and then if they got a PUD to expand that, they would not actually have to come back in front of the council to get that approval pursuant to the PUD.
Wouldn't have to go back in front of the Liquor Control Commission to expansion?
You, you wouldn't have to come back in front of the council. The PUD, we could communicate to the Liquor Commission. Once you do the PUD process, we have the ability to communicate to them and not have you come back through. I just really wanted to provide that, so.
Councilman Beckis.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Certainly can't speak for my peers, but I'm certainly ready to move forward with the application that we have in front of us right now, knowing full well, you know, historically what this business has, has been operating, how it's been operating in our community. I am in support of moving forward, so we can just proceed, but I am also very much in support of the exploration of a PUD to allow for the proper usage of what has been historically happening here on-site. I, I will admit, I have been maybe drinking more than a sampling at that establishment. And so I think that we have.
I think that we have a historical context here to go by, and if we can get to Rome,
as you said, through any, any method, I would certainly be in support of that PUD or, or other mechanism as well. I, certainly there's a historical record of this happening, but also a historical record of, of the operator being a good operator, supporting a small local business in a core neighborhood here in Lincoln that I think we want to preserve, so.
Thank you, Councilperson. That said, I think that there is some, there are certainly questions about consistency. I understand the application now. I understand the historical, you sort of, the habit that was created in that neighborhood. But by approving the license that we have before us, knowing that you will eventually come to a PUD and you don't have to come back, means that we've really created a very small neighborhood bar. And I, or we were acknowledging that it is a small neighborhood bar, and so I have some concern that we are consistent throughout the city, because there are other places where we've had similar requests, and certainly I believe the grocery store right next to Moran's came forward and asked for a liquor license, and we denied that because of their proximity to residential. And they even called out their neighbor, your establishment. So I just, I just want the public to understand that we are going, if we move this forward, that we are agreeing that the habit that was created is fine, and that we will have other applications come before us in a similar manner, also asking for the same leniency. Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll see if there is anyone else who'd like to speak. And with that, is there anyone in chambers who would like to address this issue, either in support or in opposition? All right. We'll move on to the next item. Madam Clerk.
I'll call items 4G and 4H together. Item 4G and H is manager application of John Domont for MMG Properties LLC, doing business at Sea Station located at 1120 South Cottington Avenue, as well as the location of Sea Station located at 1401 Pine Lake Road.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. John Domont, General Manager at Sea Station, 14th and Inky Hill and South Cottington Avenue. I've been in the industry for 15-plus years and probably on the upper of the 15-plus. I was with Quick Shop for, I think, 10 of those years plus. Held my liquor license with Quick Shop. I was with Prairie Lake Shell as a General Manager, acting General Manager there. Then did a little stunt down in Florida for about a year with 7-Eleven, didn't like Florida, and moved back home. And so I've been back here, been with Sea Station for seven months, and here to get my liquor license.
Do any council people have questions? Seems simple.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
All right. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this application, either in support or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item 4I, manager application of Marilyn R. Slattery for Country View Studios Inc., doing business as Art and Soul located at 5740 Hidco Drive, Suite A.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Slattery.
Good evening.
All right. Please say your name, your address.
Marilyn Slattery, 5740 Hidco Drive, here in Lincoln.
And you're standing next to?
This is my husband, Jim.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about your business.
We, it's a family business. We opened in 2011, survived COVID, and we do, we have a cafe and a full bar. We do cooking classes and art classes, and we want to have people come to a place and feel like that they're at home so they can be inspired and create.
Are there any questions from councilors?
Painted any more buses lately?
I painted a lot, but not buses.
Just the one time.
You did one.
I did.
For the, for the police unit?
For the police unit, yeah. And got a ride in it from.
Yep, very good.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
No, that's a, I wasn't even expecting a question like that. Fantastic. All right. Well, no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this application, either in support or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
I'll call item 4J, application of Tailwind L&amp;K LLC, doing business at Tailwind L&amp;K for an additional two indoor areas, one on the first floor measuring approximately 65 feet by 38 feet, and one on the second floor measuring approximately 480 feet by 60 feet at 2400 West Adams Street.
Is the applicant here? Investigator Parker, if you wouldn't mind. I actually did have a question about this one.
Yes. So the dimensions that were spelled out are inaccurate, but that is what we got from the state.
Okay.
After, this has been a long, arduous process with myself, Chuck Schweitzer, and everyone to figure out how this is going to move forward. I, it's my understanding that the state now has the new dimensions of this, and it will basically be the entire second floor terminal area, except for the exits obviously out to the parking garages and on the jetways, and then the entire public area on the first floor. The initial dimensions that were given out there were probably, those are probably two, three months old, and that's probably the four iterations ago of this whole endeavor for us. So it's my understanding that the state has been sent that and given the new dimensions for this.
What would we do with, what should we do with this application?
That's a great question that I cannot answer.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right. Is it the, do you know if it's the intention of the airport authority to open the entire public space of the airport for special events and allow alcohol? Or are they intending to actually open up another lounge?
So this was actually by suggestion of Chuck and I to open up the entire airport, much like you see Denver, so on and so forth, to make it easier for them. They tried to narrow the scope, and this is honestly the first time we told them, no, you need to expand it, because in order for them to actually control the alcohol, especially in the second floor terminal area, there would have to be fencing applied, and it just, it would be a massive undertaking that honestly, personnel-wise, they wouldn't have the ability to cover to make sure alcohol isn't leaving the licensed area, going into a seating area that's not licensed, and everything like that. In terms of public events, I can't answer that. I do know that the reason for the first floor area, the dimension that she read out, was just a very small kind of square right in the middle of it, that they were hoping to, you know, bring kind of a portable bar down there for people as they're waiting for loved ones or whatever. And we suggested that that's not going to be possible for you, to be honest with you. It's going to be much harder just to control in this small square space as opposed to just opening it up into the entire public area on the first floor.
All right. Councilman Chubb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Investigator Parker, this is going to sound weird. So the application we have in front of us to vote on today is wrong.
Right.
We'd be knowingly voting on a wrong, an application that's incorrect, or can, if we do that, will the Liquor Commission kick it back because we know it's wrong? That's the first option. Should we wait and approve it after we get correct dimensions? Should I ask Mr. Christie this question?
Well, I, I would say we're going to run up to our statutory timeline. However, the, I actually brought this issue before the Liquor Commission last week, and they weren't aware of it, based off of what they had sent us. What I would say, maybe, what's that?
I said, I think you're going to get it right.
Okay, I appreciate it. To do our due diligence, I would suggest we continue even if we run up against a statutory timeline, so we're voting on the correct language. And then we can retroactively just say, hey, we did approve it, and obviously I can talk to the commission itself to say, hey, you had sent us the wrong dimensions. Hopefully that can waive that 45-day deadline, and we're going to vote on this.
At our next scheduled meeting.
The next scheduled meeting. It would be my suggestion.
So is this for the entire building?
Pretty much.
Well, there's no kids who can be in there after 9 o'clock?
No, they'll be fine. Kids will be allowed in there. So the idea on the first floor, unless things change, was to every once in a while have a portable bar area down there. Right now, they don't have any specific area that's permanent down there, and I don't know if they're going to use it for events or what. The second floor area would mirror much like the airports, the larger airports that we see, that opens the alcohol to the entire terminal area, and it doesn't provide such a heavy lift for their staff to monitor and then require fencing to fence off areas and everything.
Really covers the basis, if you will, to make sure that whatever event they want to do, they're pretty much covered and doing.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's why the suggestion was made to them to just open it all up.
Okay. All right. But your recommendation would be that we, we hold until we get.
I would.
A corrected diagram, and that we'll, we'll ask the Liquor Commission to give us a few more days on the statutory end.
Yes, and I will have an answer for you tomorrow on that.
All right.
So, thank you.
You very much. Is there any other questions on this item from councilors? All right. And is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? All right, Madam Clerk, let's move to the voting session.
That's on me?
Yes.
It's on me. Madam Chair, if I may, before, in the past, I've always made a motion to include everything. Are there additional discussion about Moran's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then. I think we're inconsistent with that, so.
Okay, so I will first make a motion that we delay item 4J until the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right, second, Beckis. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on 4J?
And for clarification, we're delaying until our next council meeting, is that correct?
Yes, which would be Monday, January 6.
Okay. Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Okay, this one's going to be a little more complicated, guys. Ready? I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 4A through 4D and 4G through 4I.
Second.
Second, Beckis. Any discussion, councilors? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Now, to allow for more conversation, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 4E through 4F.
Second.
Okay, second, Beckis. And let's discuss.
I just, I just see us being really inconsistent. We have a grocery store right next to this place that, one of the liquor licenses, we said no. Then the liquor, the establishment gets sold that's right next to a house, and we're going to allow it to continue. We had the same thing at 52nd and O Street. The guy buys a grocery store that. The guy buys a grocery store that actually was selling wine inside and liquor. And so he buys it, and without knowing that because of Gateway Manor buying the property behind him, that he can't have a liquor license now. So I just, I just see us, the city, being really inconsistent with who gets to have a liquor license and who doesn't. I think either we let them all have it, or, or we stick to the planning guidelines, because it seems like we're deviating from that just, just for this one business. Didn't do that to the others. That's my problem with it.
Councilman Beckius?
Um, I, Councilman Duden, I, I hear you absolutely. You know, I think that the City of Lincoln's alcohol use permitting and how it correlates with our zoning can be burdensome for business owners to try to figure out, and difficult to apply across the board, especially when we get into issues of grandfathering, grandfathering in our core neighborhoods. I, I think that what we have before us is a path forward for a business that has been operating in a similar, like-kind way for a long period of time, albeit not a perfect comparison to how they have been operating, perhaps as they should not have been operating, actually. But, but I think that this is probably a path forward. But I hear you in terms of it's a painful process. You know, neighborhood advocates for a long time have been really activated on the issue of alcohol sales in core neighborhoods, and so that has played a lot into it over time. But I'm going to support this motion to, to move forward so that this business can continue.
I just don't see any, there's no grandfather clause. Was, and I wouldn't have a problem with it. In fact, that, all of them should have had, been able to have a license. But I think we're making an exception on one, and I just see that as being a little prejudicial.
Any other councilors? Councilman Bowers?
I just want to say, I, you know, I, I still need to think about how I'm going to vote on the specific one, but I, I think what Tom Duden's saying is accurate. I mean, I really do. I mean, I have a hard time saying no to, you know, the historical context of this, you know, the fact that they've been up and running, but, I mean, even if I vote in support, that doesn't mean that Tom Duden's incorrect in what he's saying. And I think that's definitely something that needs to be looked at. So I think you're, I think you have a really good point there, Tom.
I think, I think that the conditions here on this application versus the other applications referenced are different and have a very different context, especially in terms of operation.
I think the, the what, where I am right now is that this is an issue that comes up repeatedly, and it, the facts of each individual case could be slightly different. But we went through this with Open Harvest for years. They wanted an application to sell liquor. We turned them down because they were so close to residential. I understand what happened with CVS across the street from there, and they made a zoning change and then came back and said, "See, we fit." And they got a liquor license there. And I just, I'm not saying that these businesses shouldn't operate. I'm saying that our, how we describe the process and how we, where we allow and where we don't allow, I would like it to be more transparent. And certainly, the grandfathering of Moran's as a business that existed, it's being sold. I have no problem with them carrying on their, the license in the same manner according to the books. I do have a problem with it going to full poor, and I cannot support that. And so if a vote for this means that they will eventually move forward to moving into full poor and being allowed to, to solidify what shouldn't have been happening in the first place, that, that rubs me the wrong way. But this was because my father was a Marine, and we have rules. And I was grow, grew up with a lot of rules, and it's like, oh, this was a rule. And I just want to make certain that we're following the rules as they're supposed to be on the books. And so in this case, I have to think pretty hard about the allowance to move forward with the PUD and then just change the nature of the business. Councilman Beckius?
Uh, thank you, Chair Washington. I think it's important to reiterate that what we have before us right now is a continuance of the liquor application as it stands today. Whether or not the previous operator was adhering to that liquor application is one thing. But what we have right now is simply a continuance of the liquor license as it stands today. And there's no indicate, there's no guarantee that the, the acceptance of that, the continuance of that liquor license would have any role, positive or negative, in the potential PUD that may or may not ever appear before the council for an expanded use.
You make a very good point, and as long as the State Liquor Board's definition of tasting is the definition that will be run, I am more comforted, if that's the right word. All right.
I made a motion for approval.
And we got a second from Beckius. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one.
We can proceed to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call items 4A under public hearing resolutions. Item, excuse me, item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new and pending claims against the city for November fifteenth through November thirtieth of 2024.
All right. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on a claim against the city? Good evening.
Justin Dubas, 48208 Lenox, Lincoln. I was curious about the parking out here. Is there a problem on the street that says until six o'clock? Are we going to get towed?
Yes, if you're on Tenth Street.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is parking in the parking lot just north of the building. If the gates are down and you take a ticket, we'll make sure it's validated.
Okay.
The gate should be up. Okay.
Okay, so I was here back in September. This is one of the, the lines from a street light to a street light. Got pulled down by Old Dominion truck and came down on our truck and SUV. So after, like, going back and forth, I was texting, I think, Tom. I was never actually able to get a police report or whatever they have, and neither was Old Dominion. So I can't get it online. You actually have to come down here, I guess. So I didn't have access to that, so I don't know what it says. So I have all the stuff from last time. I don't know if you need to, like, we need to go over that, redo that. But their truck is at thirteen foot, six inches, and the line is supposed to be above fifteen foot, six inches from what I've heard from just, like, the Assistant City Attorney. We did little research, and it says that the lights are supposed to be at twenty-two. Eighteen is standard for these lines, which is higher than what even that is. And so we, we actually, you know, did our own measurements. LES finally came back out and replaced the line that got ripped down. And we have a video and some photography, like, with the tape measure from the line, and it's still only at fourteen foot, three inches. So even after they're supposed to fix it right and do it right, it, it's still, like, you know, teetering around that, you know, thirteen-six that this truck's supposed to be at. The, the police report said that it's obvious that the driver admitted to fault, that he, like, seen the line, thought he could make it. I'm kind of agreeing with Old Dominion at this point, because I think, like, at the time, Vine Street, Holdridge, and Layton were all under construction, so he had nowhere else to go. His delivery was, this was in route to his delivery at a printing shop on North Sixty-Six, so he had to cut through residential somewhere. So that left him really no choice. This was a quicker route for him. I got an email from Old Dominion. They got an independent adjuster, and the adjuster basically came up with the same conclusion that there's no signs anywhere around there. I drove around, like, probably a two-mile perimeter and didn't see anything as far as, like, prohibiting trucks, trailers, tractor trucks, whatever. So I don't see anything that, them being in that, on the street in that neighborhood was, you know, at, at his fault, or maybe whatever. They said they used caution. I mean, he wasn't, like, flying down the street or nothing, but he drug this thing a block, blocked down and did damage, so. After talking to them, they said they hired the adjuster and they sent an independent adjuster to inspect the area. It was confirmed that there was no signs prohibiting truck traffic on the roadway. Based on these findings, our firm remains, our denial remains firm. And then at that point, they recommended we proceed with, with filing a claim through our personal insurance carrier. My son's mom and myself just have liability on our vehicles, so that's nothing that's going to be covered on our insurance policy, so we're out there. Then I got a letter from you guys saying that they were going to bring it back here. "In order for a claim to be authorized for the payment of public funds, it must be shown that a legal basis exists for liability. The mere occurrence of an accident or incident on public property in and on itself is not sufficient. In order for this type of claim to be authorized for payment for public funds, it must be shown that the city had knowledge of a claim defect with the street light wire prior to the incident." So there, there was actually claims with not only the trees, but the lines. And this was with Lincoln Parks and Rec. So we've had a claim, or we've had an ongoing thing with Lincoln Parks and Rec since we bought the place and approximately eight years ago. So there's trees just all over the place, branches everywhere. It's pulling up our sidewalks, the, the curbs, the, our entryway, which is the streets, the city's supposed to be liable from the, the city sidewalk out to the curb. And it's, it's just been a mess over there. Nobody will come do nothing, and we're on a waiting list, whatever, whether it's relevant or not. So after getting the response, we came back here just to see if you guys want to help us take care of it. I mean, we don't have the time, any effort to, like, throw into this. My son's graduating, going, enlisting in the military, so it's like one less thing off his shoulders. Like, to put it in perspective, it's like somebody door dings your car, and you got to look at it every day, just like, that in the back of your mind is just annoying, you know? It just looks like crap, so. He's been, like, asking me about this, like, once a week, but.
Are you just about wrapped up? Do you have a lot more there?
So we, we filed this back in eight fourteen, this is four months later. We're just trying to get it wrapped up. I mean, I, I don't see them being ultimately reliable because there, there is no signs, whatever, that it was below, what, what they're, you guys are supposed to be in ordinance. Their, their trucks are sitting at a certain, they had nowhere to go. So, I mean, we're not liable, and everybody's just kind of getting around, so I don't, I don't know where this is going. But the next step would be hiring a general practitioner, which we don't have money for, so, I mean, that's, that's our next step, I guess.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for coming down. Let's see if we have questions to discuss, councilors? Councilman Duden?
Mr. Dubas, since, since I've had some conversation with you back and forth over this, you know, I'm convinced that the city's not liable for this. And just because the wire was hanging low, that does not give anybody the license to just mow them all down. There's such a thing as stopping your truck and getting out and taking a look. And if it's too low, then you back up. So, and, and so I, I just, the claim that you have is not against the city.
And to me, it's like, I guess it's perspective, so I don't know much to say on that.
Well, I, I'm giving you the perspective of my twenty-six years of law enforcement experience and working these kinds of accidents, and I think you might have something with the, the truck driver, but it looks like you might have to seek some legal advice.
So, so even after, you know, having it pulled down, seeing that it was a problem, then putting up a new one, measuring it still not to where it's supposed to be, then doing their job.
That's a separate issue. That's not, has nothing with this accident.
But we reported it now, and it's still, they're not coming back to fix it. It's still below what it's supposed to be at. So I'm just saying, even if we would have, doesn't matter.
City Attorney, Mr. Christie? Mr. Dubas read from a, a second letter, I believe, maybe it was the first letter, but that said, could you read us a portion of that letter? I think it talked about free notice?
Yes, I can. So I think the letter that he read... I think he was reading, and, yes, "In order for this type of claim to be authorized for payment from public funds, it must be shown that the city had knowledge of a claim defect with the street light wire prior to the incident, because the city was without notice of any issue or defect concerning the street light wire prior to the incident, your claim will again be forwarded to Lincoln City Council with the recommendation that it be denied." I think that's what he was reading from.
Now, Mr. Christie, we get a lot of requests or, for claims against the city with trees, and I think we have the same requirement that unless we're given prior notice of a, an issue with a particular tree, we're not, the city is not liable. And is that, are we, am I looking at this in the same way? Is this a good analogy that we did not have a notice that this wire, this guideline was a problem? And so it being snapped does not necessarily make it the responsibility of the city, because we did not know that there was a problem before this accident happened?
Correct. You, you said a lot there. What, what I would say, what I would say generally is that notice is a, is a requirement when we're talking about these sort of things. And if the city does not have notice, then, you know, there is no liability there, which I believe is what you said.
I did. You said it much clearer, cleaner. Thank you. All right. I think that, that helps to clarify it for me. I'm in the same place, I think, as Councilman Duden, but I just wanted to come back at, through our regular tour process. And would you just, what is Mr. Dubas's next, what can he do next?
Well, certainly, I mean, he mentioned, he mentioned hiring a lawyer. Obviously, he could do that. Certainly, he could continue to talk to the insurance company of the, of the truck driver. It sounds like he's had lots of communications with them as well. He could continue to do that. He could have lawyer help him with that. He could also, you know, he's always free to hire a lawyer and continue this in the courts as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the City Attorney? All right.
Could I also, I just, I just want to bring up that, so there's a storm that happened right before this, literally within a week of this. And FEMA, like, gave you guys public funds, like, three million dollars to, like, address issues like this across the city. So there's, like, also money sitting there? I don't know if you knew about that or aware of that?
I don't believe the money was set aside for...
But it was for damage across the city.
Guylines.
I'm just stating, I don't know if that applies to this or not, but, I mean, it was one of those act of God things, so it wasn't our fault, it wasn't your fault. Maybe it was his fault, but I'm just saying it, it happened, and it could have been from that. I'm sure it was from that, but there's also those funds, so.
Yeah. That's a slightly different issue, and I don't believe that those funds were set aside for power lines, for guy lines on power poles, for tree damage. I'm so, sorry, but you'll, we'll vote... I'm so sorry, but you'll vote on this and if someone removes it, then you're, you'll have relief. If someone does not remove it from the denial list, it'll go as stands.
Very good.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to come forward to discuss a claim against the city? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's move forward.
I'll call item five B. Item five B is approving the Microsoft enterprise agreement between the city and Microsoft Corporation granting the city license to use Microsoft products for a 36 month term, accepting the quote from inside public sector to provide the Microsoft software products for a term of 36 months for a total expenditure of $4,160,712.93 and authorizing expenditure in the same amount, authorizing the purchasing agent to procure their Microsoft products under state of Nebraska contract number 15764.
All right. Good evening. Abby Ecker, Chief Information Officer, 949 West Bond Street. So this proposed item is for the renewal of our enterprise agreement with Microsoft. Basically, that covers everyone who uses a computer in the city and county. That's for things like email, Teams, SharePoint. So happy to answer any questions, but this is a pretty broad contract in terms of scope of our technology ecosystem. Happy to help wherever I can.
Are there any questions from counselors on the enterprise agreement? We have no questions for you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk. Oh, is there anyone here in the public who'd like to speak on this item? Pardon me. This is the three-year agreement to extend our Microsoft enterprise contract. Is anyone here like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? Seeing no one. Madam Clerk.
I'll call item five C, a resolution expressing the city's gratitude and honoring the outstanding service and dedication of Lori Seibel.
Wood Director, President, CEO, Lori Seibel, please come forward. Hello.
Good evening. Is it all right if I say a few words?
Would you want to speak before or after?
I will speak before.
All right. Why don't you tell us, just give us a little bit of an overview so that we all know why we're going to thank you profusely.
Oh, well, that's kind of you. Thank you. I really wanted to come talk to you, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. You know, you know that I'll be retiring on December 31st after 27 years of leading the community health endowment. And so it has been a time of a bit of reflection and I can tell you there's been a lot to reflect, reflect on. I wanted to share just a little bit with you today, things that I really wanted you to know before I leave. I want to go back really briefly and I won't tell the whole story. We might be here a long time, but I do want to go back briefly to 1996. And the city leaders had begun thinking about selling Lincoln General Hospital, as you know, and you might recall that that was a pretty challenging time for our city. There was a lot of community discussion, a lot of community discourse. Mike Johans, who was the mayor at that time, tells me that even today, and after all of his service at the city, county, state, and federal levels, that it was in the top tier, if not the most difficult issue that he faced in his public life. It was, it was a pretty big deal. But it was also a time for us to do a lot of deep listening to our community and we did a lot of that. Not only did the community tell us that they wanted us to maintain ownership, local ownership of our hospital, despite offers from national chains, which were a little bit higher, but whom have also many gotten bankrupt since that time. The city wanted that local ownership, but they also wanted the resulting $37.8 million from the sale of that hospital to be put into an endowment that would grow at the rate of inflation. They wanted that fund to be worth to future generations what it was worth to them. They wanted the funds to be used to create a healthier community. In fact, they wanted it to be create, they went a little further and said they wanted it to be used to create the healthiest city. They wanted a community board of trustees to govern those public assets, to invest the funds, to hire the staff, to make decisions on how to give those funds back to the community. Those were pretty strong words from a very strong-minded community. And so we spent a lot of time looking around, trying to find something that looked like that, but we found nothing like it. So we created our own. I think it was an incredibly bold and visionary decision when the city council agreed with what the community wanted back in August of 1991. And they created this perfectly Lincoln-centric organization called the Community Health Endowment. It is very important for me to tell you, and one of the things that I don't want to be forgotten, is that what started from a place of community discord and disagreement and fear and worry became the community's endowment. And it was built on the community's voice. That's part of our history, our chapter that I really want to have on record is something that is important to our history. So 27 years later, here we are. We look remarkably the same as we did back in 1997. The funds remain city assets. They are public assets. They are governed by a public board of trustees of whom I serve. What started as $37.8 million has grown at the rate of inflation or another $38.2 million for a total value today of an inflation-adjusted $76 million. In addition, we have returned $43.6 million to the community for a total impact on our community since 1998 of $120 million. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished, but I'm especially proud of how hard we listen to the community. They ask us that we be transparent, that we welcome everyone to our table, that we avoid conflict and division, and we remain staunchly apolitical. And I believe we've done that. You know, those early years were incredibly foundational and there were many more twists and turns than I have the time to recount to you. But probably the most important, and I don't want this to be forgotten either, was to pass a city ballot initiative and later what I would consider to be our miracle on ice moment, when a statewide ballot initiative changed the Nebraska constitution to allow this fund, the Community Health Endowment, to invest in a diverse portfolio of bonds and equities. It is right there in section 11-1 of the Nebraska constitution, and that accomplishment is certainly part of our legacy. So in sum, I believe that Community Health Endowment is an example of a community-driven, purpose-filled, impact-oriented story. We have made sure that our work is rooted in the community voice and that we're investing in people and not in programs. I've often said that I may not live long enough to see the impact of our work, but I'm also an old farm girl from southeast Nebraska. And I can tell you that I believe in the soil we've prepared and the seeds we've planted. And while our work can be big and bold and our footprints can be seen all over Lincoln, our work is just as valuable when we're changing one life at a time. So I want to thank you publicly for your partnership through the years, for approving and recommending many exemplary trustees to our board who are committed and deeply invested in our work, for the conversations we've had often about our shared desire to make Lincoln a better place. And I want to thank you for your service. Coming from a family of public servants, I know how difficult your job is. So thank you. So much has been accomplished in the last 27 years, and I think Lincoln should be proud to be home to the Community Health Endowment. So I want to give one more thank you, a public thank you to, well, to my husband, who is here, over here, Brian, to the many trustees who have served, including Tom Beckius, our very own Tom Beckius. I always say we launched his career. We have served, who have served CHE through the years, to the CHE staff who work so ably and with such passion and wisdom. And of course, again, to you and the mayor who have been our steadfast city partners, and to the community who loved Lincoln enough to create CHE for today and for future generations. So I leave this work with a full heart and with great confidence in what CHE will continue to do far into the future and a deep gratitude for everyone, including you, who have been part of our story. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, last week I had the privilege of attending another function where we thanked you. And one of the folks spoke, who spoke, said that you are a storyteller, and you are. You're a wonderful storyteller. And it is my privilege to read, maybe not as poetic, some of the words you just gave to us. A resolution expressing the city's gratitude and honoring the outstanding service and unwavering dedication of Lori Seibel. Whereas the city of Lincoln sold Lincoln General to Bryan Hospital in 1997, resulting in net revenues of about $37 million for the city. And whereas then Mayor Mike Johans appointed a task force to address the use of these funds and after a public process to gather community input, the task force developed a vision for a healthier Lincoln and recommended the development of the Community Health Endowment. And whereas the Lincoln City Council by ordinance 17402 in August 1998 established the Community Health Endowment for the purpose of funding health and health-related programs and projects which further the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Lincoln. And whereas Lori Seibel began working with the Community Health Endowment in October of 98, and the Board of Trustees selected Lori Seibel as its first and only president/CEO in September of 1999. And whereas Lori Seibel has since demonstrated exceptional leadership with boldness, creativity, passion, and expertise, and played a crucial role in developing programs in early and adequate prenatal care, healthy food access, youth fitness, mental wellness, and human connection to improve the health and health outcomes of our community, leading the Community Health Endowment provides funding to community organizations who's used to make Lincoln a healthier place to work, live, and raise a family. And whereas Lori Seibel was instrumental in creating the transformational project, and one of my favorites, Place Matters, using place-based data maps to help our community develop better projects and create stronger policy to make Lincoln even better. And whereas Lori Seibel and the CHE Board of Trustees has granted more than $43.6 million into the Lincoln community, directed toward the mission of making Lincoln the healthiest community in the nation while growing the endowment for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council, the city of Lincoln, Nebraska, we do hereby jointly express our gratitude for the outstanding service and dedication of CHE President and CEO Lori Seibel.
Very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to take a moment to thank Lori for her mentorship and friendship over the last 14 years. I look forward to seeing what's next for Lori, and I know she will enjoy spending more time with Brian and her son and her daughter as well. And thank you to your service, thank you for your service to our community and the work you've done over the last 27 years. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other councilmen? Thank you. Thank you again. All right. Madam Clerk. And if I could be so bold, can we vote on this item before we vote on the other resolutions?
Yes.
Five C.
I'll call item five C, a resolution expressing the city's gratitude and honoring the outstanding service and dedication of Lori Seibel, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Going to the top of the resolutions?
I'll call item five eight, accepting and approving the report of new pending claims against the city for November 15th through November 30th of 2024, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion?
I believe we do have a motion to amend on this one, removing Ms. DeMathy should be removed from the list of denied claims. Second.
Second. Beckius, any discussion on motion to amend number one? Seeing no discussion, let's vote on this one.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Before that we go to the main motion, is there another motion? Will anyone else bring another motion? All right, then let's vote on the main motion.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right.
Well, item five B, approving the Microsoft enterprise agreement between the city and Microsoft Corporation granting the city license to use Microsoft products for a 36 month term, accepting the quote from inside public sector to provide the Microsoft software products for a term of 36 months for a total expenditure of $4,160,712.93 and authorizing expenditure in the same amount, authorizing the purchasing agent to procure their Microsoft products under state of Nebraska contract number 15764, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. That concludes public hearing resolutions. We'll move forward to public hearing ordinances. Madam Clerk.
I'll read items six A. Change of zone 24018, application of Systostris Temple Holding Corp. to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture District to H4 Highway Commercial District on approximately 15 acres on the property during located north of Post Street and Anthony Lane intersection. Also, as a reminder, there is a request for these three items to be moved to the pending list, no date certain. I'm just asking Chair if you would still want me to read items six B and six C as all three items are related.
No, I think we can forego reading all three of those items. There is a motion to delay. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Beckius. Second, Duden. All right, discussion. Or no discussion? If it's clear, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to delay depending, no date certain.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. Thank you very much. And that concludes that section. Let's move to ordinance's third reading.
Item seven A is approving an agreement for tower space and appurtenances between city and Selco Partnership at Delaware Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless to occupy and use certain city-owned parcel of real property and tower generally located at 2201 South 84th Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved. And again, I see that we need a motion to.
We'll take a second first?
I'm sorry.
Second.
Second. Carlson, okay. Now.
Now I'll make the motion to delay this, but it looks like it will be for more than one week. It'll be until January 6th.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Beckius, any discussion? Okay, great.
Just a quick discussion. I have down the 13th to delay. Is that correct or should it be the sixth?
You know.
Maybe I wrote it down wrong, so.
Yeah, I think it was the sixth, but Attorney C was the one who brought forward a request from the applicant to delay for a couple more weeks. Oh, here he is. Mr. C, it seems as if.
We are confused.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Tim C., Assistant City Attorney. If we could move it to the 13th.
13th.
That would give us a little more time to get everything wrapped up and hopefully not have to do this again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. January 13th, 2025.
Good.
Man, you really were an investigator, weren't you? You're here. All right. Let's vote on the motion to delay.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. All righty. Next item.
I'll call item seven B, annexation 24009, application of Nebraska Holding. I'll call item 7B, Annexation 24009, application of Nebraska Holdings LLC to annex approximately 36.59 acres on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion?
I got some points or questions or things I was hoping to kind of get figured out.
Okay, Councilman Bowers.
Thanks. I'm a little disappointed because I thought we would have something in writing to talk about. The person whose property this is going near and that will actually be annexed in, she has some animals that live on her property. And Carrie and Yohansi, can I ask you some questions if you want to come on up?
Director Kernan?
Okay, so I'll ask you some questions, just kind of put in things for context. The Kelly has some animals on her property, right, and some of those animals are not allowed within city limits, right? What's the current process that's put in place now if the annexation moves forward?
So she has several different types of animals. They're considered small fowl. The one, the only animal that we have concerns about is a rooster. And so as the annexation would occur, she's allowed to keep the rooster until the rooster dies. She's not allowed to then replace that rooster based on current ordinance.
From what I understand, though, that's not currently in code, though, right, and that's more at the whims of like the executive branch and/or whoever's in that decision-making capacity, right?
That's correct.
And when I say executive branch, I don't mean just the mayor. I mean like Animal Control and the Health Department.
Correct.
That's what makes me really nervous, right? Like, I mean, I think we have good folks that are staffed there now, but I mean, elections happen and, you know, there's a transition and people, you know, leave their position. So I'm trying to figure out how do we ensure that a person who has a pet or an animal or livestock, whatever the appropriate term is, right, is protected from an agreement or protected with an agreement that is made, what I would consider maybe informally, right? The way that I would assume that we would do that is to have something in writing, but it appears that we don't have anything in writing because there was another thing that I would like to have included in there, and that was to waive the fees to permit those animals because she wasn't asking to be annexed in, and it's different than like sewer hookup or water hookup. How do we solve this issue? How do we make sure that she's protected from, because I mean, someone's going to complain about the rooster at some point, right? I mean, like, that's just going to happen. People are going to move out to this newly annexed place, and it's not the rooster's fault that the city is growing around it, and people are going to move next door to a rooster and then be shocked when the rooster makes a call, and then they're going to complain about the rooster, and I want to make sure that the lady's able to keep her pet. Like, that's my end goal. So how do we do that?
I'll defer to you.
You're looking at me?
Yeah.
I just, the first thing I would say is I don't know a lot about roosters, and I don't know the timeframe of the annexation, sorry. And like neighbors being around, so I just want to say that there's some unknowns. I just want to acknowledge I have no idea the timeframe of those things. But setting that aside, we, I think if council was asking for an agreement, I think that obviously the council in its purview could pass a resolution. Certainly, another option could be an agreement with the Health Department that could potentially be arranged, but also ordinance. You know, an ordinance change or a policy change, right? Those are all options to put, to put something in writing.
I think, I think that, you know, we need to have a bigger conversation because this issue comes up whenever there's an annexation, right? Where, you know, there's animals and, you know, this isn't the first time that this has come up, right? I think what's concerning to me is about the fact that it's a rooster as opposed to, you know, something else that may be less likely to get a neighborhood complaint, right? And I think that the council's uncomfortable on the fly creating resolutions or policy changes, and so that's why I was... Yohansi, I'm not blaming you for this. It's just, that's why I asked, was hoping to get something in writing.
And I would, I would say, I mean, it is a policy of the Health Department, right? I mean, that, I think it was a policy before she was the director. It is the policy now. I'm not, you know, intimately familiar with their policies. I don't know exactly if it's written down or not. I'm hearing maybe that it's not, but I would just, you know, reiterate, this has been their policy in practice, I think, for, you know, for a significant period of time. This has been my understanding.
By discretion, though. I mean, like, there'd be nothing stopping from, like, let's say, you know, God forbid, let's say something happened to you, Carrie, you know what I mean, and someone else came over, because I trust you 100%. That's not where this is coming from, right? My trust, my mistrust comes from, you know, time, you know what I mean? And like, folks that we have no control over, you know, coming in. So like, let's say someone comes in, and let's say, you know, Jane Doe comes in and then says, okay, you know, you and your pets have got to go, even though they're in compliance now with being outside the city. And so knowing that the council is probably uncomfortable with crafting something or a resolution on the fly, and how do we, and knowing that it's more of a discretionary decision, and also knowing that this person does not have the resources to necessarily fight like a lengthy court battle in order to keep her pets or animals, what can we do to help strengthen her position to be able to protect her and her animals? And knowing that, like, the property's not going to be grandfathered in, right? So it's not like she can go out and buy like five new roosters, you know what I mean, and start a farm or whatever. But what can we do or what, how can we strengthen the position to be able to protect her and her animals as much as possible?
I think when, when I earlier said, you know, written agreement with the Health Department, what I really meant was like a policy in writing, right? And so, I mean, that is one, I think, avenue that I think is currently being looked into, is my understanding, so.
So we are looking at current ordinance language to get that updated. I don't know if that will work within the timeframe of the annexation and when that, those ordinances change gets approved. So that's kind of the unknown out there.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is that, because I agree, I think that we need to do an ordinance change, you know, that addresses the bigger issue because this pops up a lot, right? But what I'm hearing you say is that there could be a written agreement between, that wouldn't necessarily be like in this city agreement, it wouldn't be a resolution, but we could do a written agreement between the Health Department, and I'm looking over at the attorney on the council out of the corner of my eye to get...
Practicing right now.
Yeah.
I would say, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yeah.
I would just say a written policy internal for the Health Department. I don't know that necessarily needs to be an agreement. We can certainly talk about it, but I mean, if the, if the Health Department has the policy written down, then that would be written policy that we would, that you or anyone could point to in the Health Department, and it would exist with the current staff, and it would exist after.
Would that written policy have to come through council first, or can we do like a written policy specifically for Kelly?
There's no, you know, I'm always hesitant to do a... You know, I don't know that I could stand up here and say the city should do policy for one person, right? There's lots of legal problems with that, and so there's nothing to try to answer your question directly. There's nothing that requires council approval for a policy, but there's nothing that prohibits having the council be aware and approve as well, if that makes sense, right?
Councilman Bowers, could I, could I join the conversation?
Please, no.
I really appreciate the conversation here because it has come up repeatedly. People who are annexed or who are getting ready to be annexed into the city often bring up, we have these many animals. For some reason, it doesn't meet the city's code for how many animals or the types of animals. And I certainly understand, and it's been the practice of the Health Department to allow those animals to live their life, but then not be added to. No one can add to their existing animals once they're into the city. Could you at least agree to come to us in January during Small Council and discuss the process and the progress that you've made, and give us a timeframe for when we might see this in writing?
Absolutely.
Yes.
We can do that.
Councilman Bowers, could that be helpful?
Yeah, I guess the thing that's going through my mind, and knowing that there's like an ordinance change coming down, right? I never want to take votes for granted, you know what I mean? And whatever gets proposed may or may not be accepted by, you know, a majority on the council, and so if an agreement comes forward in January, are you talking about for animals and annexations that happened prior to an ordinance change? Or are you talking about the policy change that you'd be proposing for an ordinance for moving forward?
I think I was, I was suggesting of policy in writing, not necessarily an ordinance change. If we're going to go to an ordinance change, we could also discuss that in January and have that brought forward to us to discuss whether or not a written policy, so codifying without creating ordinance. So putting on, into paper, the practice and the policy of allowing animals to live out their lives. That's one avenue. The other avenue would be for us to talk about what would be necessary in order to put an ordinance on the books. But I mean, I agree with you that to write an ordinance tonight or a resolution tonight, I'm uncomfortable with doing that, and I'm also uncomfortable with writing a resolution for one individual.
No, I agree, and that's why I was really hoping that we could have something prior to today that we could have. So I'm disappointed that that did not occur because there were other things that I was hoping that we could have put in there, like waiving the permitting fees and just providing as much protection as possible, especially because, you know, as we have talked about a potential ordinance change, you know, I don't, I don't know if we're going to come to an agreement on that in the future. Carrie, can I ask you, oh, sorry. Okay. Can I get, can I get a pledge or a confirmation or an agreement that you will not remove the, I'm not, that, how do I word this, right? I'm trying to get something like on the record that says that, like, her animals will be protected even if someone like makes a complaint, right? Like, but I don't want to include in there, right, like, if there's mistreatment of animals, you know what I mean? Or if it's like a chimp crazy situation, you know, where they're, you know, if it's like a puppy mill. Like, I'm not trying to say that, right? I'm trying to say...
I think if I may, I think, and she could speak for herself, but I'm not, but if I may, I think what you're asking, and I think probably what she could commit to is continuing the current practice that she has been, that she has stated on the record, and it's very clearly articulated that from where she sits, there's only, I think she identified one problem, animal, and we know that that's the rooster. But again, I think she can commit to continuing the current practice that exists in the Health Department, which she stated what that is.
I will add, staff have been out to meet with the homeowner, and we've talked about the animals that she has, what the annexation impact is going to be. They have shared that the concern is around that one particular animal rooster. The other animals are all, will be fine, and communicating that she can keep that rooster, but once it passes away, she can't replace that rooster, and she understood that. So we built that relationship so that as annexation does occur, we can continue to work with her in regards to any concerns that pop up.
And I absolutely agree with that. I think that that's the perfect way to go. Like I said, I'm still nervous that someone's going to make a complaint on the rooster. The rooster's going to get taken to the main society because there's going to be a new crop of folks that may be, you know, in different positions. And so, I mean, I think because we don't have anything written, I have, the only option that I have is to trust that people will still be in their positions and that this rooster's going to live out a happy, healthy, cockadoodle life or whatever, you know? But it makes me, makes me, makes me nervous because I know that we can't always plan for things, and having things written down is always the best way to go. But I guess that's the option that we have now.
And did you say you were reviewing some of these policies now?
We are currently reviewing ordinance language specific to this situation for both large and small animals.
Sure.
So the goal is to have those drafted by the end of the month, so I think this will be fairly quick. I don't know how quickly the annexation will occur, but I think we'll be able to meet the timeline as far as your request for solid stuff that's written down and then approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just, you know, and I've already said this, but just say it again, the only reason why I'm nervous about that is because, again, I don't want to take anything for granted that the council will actually agree on a potential proposed ordinance change, or there might be some change, or that, you know, a future challenge might be that, you know, because the annexation happened prior to this ordinance change that we're talking about, I'm just, I'm concerned.
Councilman Shob, and then Councilman Carlson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so my, I want to... Resorting the annexation is on our agenda to vote on right now. That's different than when the houses get built next to the young woman. That probably is years away. So those neighbors to complain are far off in the distant future. If annexed today, passed an ordinance in two, three months, the person who complains in the future will be governed by the ordinance we passed in the future.
Right. And I get that, and I know that that's what's probably, that's what's going to have to happen. But again, like I said multiple times, like, without seeing the written language of what the ordinance may be in the future, I also don't want to guarantee or take advantage of the fact that I think the council will pass that, right?
I agree.
And that, you know, until it's written down and that, that resident, that future resident of Lincoln is going to be protected. It just, it makes me, makes me nervous because I trust the, I trust everyone's intent, right? But intent can change after time.
Councilman Weber.
I, I just want to speak generally about Falcon Heights. You know, I think Falcon Heights is an exciting investment in Northwest Lincoln, especially in the Northwest 48th area of the Air Park community, which often, you know, when I talk to folks out there, they always say, "Oh, I have to go into town for that," when they're very much part of the City of Lincoln. And I think having 81 wise-sized homes that are attainable for our older residents that make it a lot easier for Lincoln to be a great place to spend your later years, to spend your retirement, or also for first-term, first-time homebuyers like myself. I think that will really help in retaining young professionals, which is something that, you know, as a college town, we talk a lot about, right? Like, how do we retain young people? How do we keep them here in Lincoln? And I think that having options, you know, for entering home equity under $200,000, that is a real solution in making sure that young people stay in Lincoln, and that's good for our economy, and I think that's good for our neighborhoods. I'm really excited about the collaboration that the developer plans to have with NeighborWorks, who has a long history of strengthening our neighborhoods. But I just have to say that it is, you know, my sincere hope that, you know, by voting to approve this today, that this is not the last investment we have in this Northwest 48th area and Air Park. You know, I always talk about the three Rs, right? Restaurants, retail, and recreation, and all three of those are missing in this neighborhood and in this community. And I think it's time that we really begin to invest in those essential services. That's what makes a community, you know, a community. There, there's the passion, right? There have been people who've lived out there for decades, and I think that it's time that the city catches up and, you know, truly invests in this, this amazing neighborhood. So I think that this vote is just a step in the right direction in making sure that the City of Lincoln is telling the residents of the Air Park community that we're here for you and we're going to serve you. I also just need to note that I'm really appreciative of the developer waiving the sewer connection fee for Ms. Livinggood, right? I think that that was, you know, and I appreciate Councilman Bowers talking about the animals, but I think that sewer connection fee for me was, was a real concern, right? That would have been really costly for an individual who is against annexation, and I, I'm really happy that the developer was able to compromise on that, and I hope we see more compromise and collaboration like that in the future. And I may be partial because my first neighbor on Northwest 12th Street in the Highlands back in like 1997, 98, 99, had a rooster that actually got taken away because of animal control. And so because of that, you know, I do appreciate Councilman Bowers's efforts to allow Ms. Livinggood to keep her animals, and I appreciate the Health Department, and I appreciate Animal Control, you know, confirming in writing, confirming on the record that they have this intent, right, to respect Ms. Livinggood's animals and her pets. And, you know, I really look forward to the opportunity of working with Councilman Bowers as we're reviewing these ordinances of what a general policy around grandfathering animals, livestock, pets, what that looks like, what that looks like for roosters, what that looks like for hens, geese, horses, right? Because this is a common topic of conversation that we have in annexation, and I think that that provides a really unique avenue for discussing, should we waive, you know, the permitting process for more than just Ms. Livinggood, but for a lot of folks that get annexed into the city with their animals, right? I think that this is a broader conversation that needs to happen, and I really appreciate Councilman Bowers being the leading voice on that. But at the end of the day, I'm excited to vote for investment in Northwest Lincoln. I'm excited to vote for investment in the Air Park community, and that's what this is. And I look forward to restaurants, recreation, and retail following in the years to follow. Thank you.
And may I suggest a fourth R, roosters?
Yes. I like it. I like it.
It'd be an interesting fourth. It'd be an interesting fourth R.
We'll have another lease.
I can't, I can't say anything against it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Abstain.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'll call item seven C. Change of Zone 24025, application of NEP Holdings LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture to R5 Residential PUD, and B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District PUD on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion?
I just want to say, I'm completely embarrassed that I said happy, healthy, cockadoodle life. And that line is going to keep me up at 3:00 in the morning. So-
It's already become-
Reflected in the record.
Let it reflect the record. Alrighty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I believe I have a motion to amend number one on item seven C.
Okay, motion to amend number one. Would someone make that motion, please?
I've moved to amend.
Thank you.
Number one, asked submitted.
Carlson and second Shob. All right. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Then let's vote on the motion to amend, and then we'll come back around to the general.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius, would you abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Okay, and now the main motion.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
All right.
I'll call item seven D. Approving the conditional annexation and change of zone agreement for Falcon Heights between the city and NEP Holdings LLC for the property generally located at the southeast corner of Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion?
I believe we have a motion to amend here also on this one. It's submitted in the packet.
Yep, we do. Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Shob.
Second.
All right, so the motion to amend number one on the conditional annexation and change of zone. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
And now the main motion.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
All right. Item seven E.
Item seven E is Change of Zone 05061G, application of Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association to amend the Southwest Village Plan Unit Development to allow an increase in gaming positions from 1,210 to 1,350, and modification to the west dent and road access with associated waivers and property generally located at 7055 South First Street, introduced by Weber, oh, excuse me, Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven F is Miscellaneous 24007, vacating the final plot of GNC Third Edition, generally located at 2100 Magnum Circle and 2035 South Cuttington Avenue, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven G is Text Amendment 24014, application Nebraska Sign Company to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.69.090, places of religious assembly, schools, and community playhouses to clarify the language describing permissible freestanding signage, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven H is Annexation 24001, application of Firefox Properties LLC to annex approximately 37.43 acres of property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion? Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item, excuse me?
Seven I.
Seven I. Excuse me, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24001, application of Firefox Properties LLC to amend the future land use plan of the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from urban residential to commercial on property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven J is Change of Zone 24001, application of Firefox Properties LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business on property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven K is Approving the Annexation Agreement for Firefox Development between City and Firefox Properties LLC for the property generally located at the northeast corner of the intersections of South 84th Street and Van Dorn Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven L is Use Permit 24001, application of Firefox Properties LLC to allow up to 175,000 square feet of commercial floor area and up to 100-room hotel with waivers to setbacks, height, block length, and lighting design standards on property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right, thank you.
Section eight is Resolutions First Readings or Items 8A through 8D. Section nine is Resolution, or excuse me, Ordinance's First Reading and Related Resolutions is Item 9A.
All right. Seeing as this is the last meeting of the month, we will have open public comment this evening. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future may do so at the open mic session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. We just ask for civility and that you allow the business of council to proceed. Welcome.
Kayshon Lunsolo, 323 North 44th Street, here again to advocate for us to be on the right side of history for Palestine. But I'm also here to talk about something that I've heard going on during the summer. So during the summer, I was at one of the meetings here, and I was appalled to hear that a little black boy, like 12 years old, was brutally beaten up and beaten so bad that he was put into a neck brace on the Fourth of July. When I heard this story and I heard about what had gone on during the Fourth of July, I couldn't help but think about the story of Edmond Till. Now, if you do not know the story of Edmond Till, Edmond Till in the, in 1955, in August, so summertime, he was accused of whistling at a white woman. How dare he, a 14-year-old black boy from the north, go down to Mississippi and whistle at a white woman? And what happened was, they kidnapped him from his home, and they tortured him to death. The little black boy here in Lincoln, they thought that he, from what I heard, threw a firecracker in their driveway. So from a little black boy with his friends, how dare they decide to throw, even if they did, which they probably didn't, threw a firecracker in somebody's driveway, he deserved to get almost beaten to death. All these similarities with things that had gone on in the South in 1955, and I'm hearing them going on in present day here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I don't know what has been done. I've heard there hasn't been any arrests, any charges for any justice for the child. But I'm kind of hoping, I know our city doesn't care about the children in Palestine, but at least we care about the children here in our own backyard in Lincoln, Nebraska. If we really want to be the city on the shining hill, we want to be a city that holds those values, I believe we should press the police to actually do their jobs, to go investigate, go, to go make some arrests. Because it's been, like, since July, and I haven't heard anything. I think as a city, we, like, and I'm also hearing that this is not an isolated incident, that more of these incidents like this happen. Like, this is appalling. This is disappointing, but not, I mean, not surprising. This is America. I'm kind of hoping that we can do something about this. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Sash Man. I reside at 1450 C Street. And I have to make this quick because my ride's going to be here shortly, and the meeting is running long. First off, I would like to make notice that the city council meeting starts at 5:30. The front doors were locked. And I let in a number, at least five people, who were wanting to attend the city council meeting. And it wasn't until one of them who came in caught a custodian and asked, hey, your front door is locked. And the custodian said, oh, we weren't told that there was going to be a meeting tonight. I wasn't told that the door needed to be. So I'm just, you know, I don't want to assume it was any one person's fault, but why would the door be locked when there's a city council meeting? And unless I was standing out in the hall, I couldn't even let these people in to come talk to you potentially. I'm also appalled that we're still talking about this 12-year-old Sudanese boy who was living in the country for like two weeks, if that's the information that I've heard correctly. Two weeks living in Lincoln, Nebraska, and then you get attacked by a mob of white adults? That is disgusting! And one of those children came and talked to you, and all I heard was a whimpering thank you for coming to speak to us. This was June 29th of this year. You can go back and re-watch it if you'd like to. It's just appalling. We can't keep our children safe here. We can't keep children safe in Palestine. We can't keep children safe in Sudan. It's just a terrible, terrible world that we bring in children up in, and it's the year 2024. That's all I have to say. Have a good rest for your cockadoodle night.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Pretty good.
They're doing all right.
Tremaine Combs, living at 2501 South 76th Street, 68506. To the chair and the members of this city council, thank you for this time. On July 20th, members and representatives of the family of the young black Sudanese boy who was surrounded and beaten by other residents of this city came and spoke at a board meeting of the New Era Baptist State Convention of Nebraska Incorporated. They detailed being surrounded, harassed, and chased in regards to a case of mistaken identity. They described that in the chaos of the moment, this 12-year-old black child newly arrived in this country was assaulted to the point of needing hospital treatment, all the while hearing racial slurs being shouted. We asked them, what was their ask? What did they want from us as a body? Their response was a desire to have back the sense of safety so violently taken from them. As president of New Era and a concerned pastor of the largest predominantly black congregation of Christians in the city of Lincoln, I called several persons this summer, past summer, expressing concern for the boy, his family, and others that looked like us. I was assured that the situation would be taken seriously, and I believed them. And in some sense, I still believe it now. But on this day, after a investigation that has come to a standstill, a young child suffering from trauma, and as a father of five beautiful black children myself, I am concerned, and I don't believe it now. But not just me alone. New Era is concerned. My congregation is concerned, and others in this community are concerned. Now, I know this was not an item on the agenda of this body tonight, but I do come with the desire to express these concerns and to give this body an ask. My ask is that this body, this city council, would provide an official letter expressing continued concern and care despite the stalled investigation. My ask is that this body, representative of this city, would in this letter give an expression to the fact that while safety can never truly be guaranteed, the safety of this family and the people who look like them have the backing of this civic body. My ask is that a reason for why the arrest has not been made, and that this city council would give this family clear next steps in this letter regarding redress if they are not satisfied with the well-meaning but stalled investigation. I'm not asking this to show up any civic group, any official, or our law enforcement. My concern is returning a sense of safety to this family, to this young boy, and a sense of security to the residents of Lincoln who know that unfortunately, such actions, such of this, has happened in Lincoln before, but they will not be tolerated now. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that we've failed to mention at the front end, for many people who are coming here for the first time, is that we do have a five-minute limitation on public comments.
That's my reputation.
I did not say that for you, Mr. Preston, Mr. Love. I did not say that for you. I would have jumped ahead for the Reverend, but I could tell he had his remarks written.
Well, it's surely my pleasure to be before you. My name is Preston Love Jr., and I am living in Omaha, Nebraska, traveled here tonight. Do you need my address as well?
And we've got that.
Yes or no?
Yes.
6021 Villa DeSante, Omaha, Nebraska. I surely bring greetings as a resident of Omaha. I came here with others, several others, from Omaha. I surely am aware and have great respect for the pastor, Combs, who just finished speaking. But I did not realize or understand exactly what he may say. I'm here for the same reason, but I find that his comments are probably better stated by him than maybe by me. But I surely want to offer you a few slices of the pie for this 12-year-old boy who was beat brutally, brutally. From my perspective, I surely agree with the pastor's conclusion and his recommendation to you. I surely am here really as a representative in a global sort of way of just justice and humanity. And I say to you that it has, and the reason I'm here, has no borders. There is no difference between Omaha and Lincoln and other places in Nebraska, or maybe- and other places in Nebraska, or maybe I could go so far as to say in this nation, where a twelve-year-old boy can be beaten brutally, and we all sit on the edge of our seats waiting for justice. And so I come here in that regard. I do have simply stated because of the time, a couple observations, just two. One is that I come here from the observation of a fellow Nebraskan for this case of the twelve-year-old boy, Nebraskan, and as a human. Secondly, I come here and my observation is that of an African-American, a member of the bigger global African-American community that has great concerns about this particular case. My heart cries out to your city. Cries out, uh, in all due respect, that the city in its own ways uh, address some of the items that Pastor Combs mentioned, but that I, uh, underline. But I think we have a couple issues that are open. Open. They're open, they're not resolved. And I would like to just take the seven minutes I have left to address them. I say to you that, of course, we would want law enforcement to solve this crime. I, I don't come here thinking, uh, that all efforts are not being done. The crime is unresolved. Number one. Number two is I think there is a need, and I come here really with this as being my major impetus for making the drive. And that is there's no way to heal in a case like this until you begin to have resolution. Are you with me, council members? There's hard healing for the individual, the family, for the community, and for all of the various ways that you can look at the community. We can't resolve, we cannot heal until we begin to get, uh, input on where we are on this case. Some may think you don't care. Some may think that you're ma- uh, you're not making any progress. But the way to address that and to help the healing is to communicate. So I'm making a case for extended communication on where we are. And because it's not just the neighborhood that it happened. I'm here because it is affecting me and my community and others here. And so I think the communication that is recommended by Pastor Combs, I would highly underline my, my name to that. I think a communication from this august, uh, organization and maybe even the mayor would be a great step towards the healing until the law enforcement gets to the resolution of the case. I make that strongly.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought I had five more minutes left. No, so I, I, I close. And I appreciate that. And so I defer to the recommendation for, for the letter or some communication in its value. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
And say hello to your attorney for me. He's a good friend of mine.
I'll pass that on. Is there anyone else who'd like to address city council this evening?
My name is Anastasia Finner. I'm going to waive my address for my personal safety. Um, it, it is, it, we are in incredibly dark times. The amount of death and the murdering of precious martyrs has been on everyone's mind. But, uh, I'm here to kind of talk broadly about how the racist culture of Lincoln breeds more violence and racism. So it's incredibly clear that after hearing and being here and seeing family members and community members come forward and talk about how this twelve-year-old Sudanese boy who is not in the country for, what, a matter of weeks? Is chased down, beaten, wound up in the hospital, and had to deal with racial slurs on top of that. And so what that tells me as a white person who can see the behaviors of other white folks is that they did it on purpose. Racism is community building within a white supremacist culture, which is what Lincoln, Nebraska is, has built and is continuing to allow to fester. It is appalling that this twelve-year-old boy, this twelve-year-old black Sudanese boy, to be so brutalized by the city and then have nothing done about it. There have been no arrests made. Apparently, there was a citation because the party was too rowdy. Nothing about the harm that is happening to actual human beings. This culture of not caring about kids here allows us to go and just murder by the thousands children in Palestine. Because if we don't care about kids here, which it is very clear, because this is not the only child that I have heard about who has faced uh, racial violence, physical violence. This is not the only case in Lincoln. And it is appalling that nothing has been done up until this point. I don't know... I don't know how the city can, after council meeting, after council meeting, after council meeting, talk about how great this city is, how the mayor is going to hand out these awards to these great people of the city, and how, oh, it's, isn't Lincoln wonderful and safe and diverse, except for the people that are brutalized that nobody seems to want to recognize? How we continue to brutalize people across the ocean because we allow weapons manufacturers to be, what, ten minutes from UNL? We allow a weapons manufacturer, General Dynamics, to be near residents, to be in just regular Lincoln life? So how, how, how is the city of Lincoln going to square that circle? How are we going to, I don't know, understand that what we're doing and the culture that we have here is brutal? How are we going to understand that the police in this situation seem to have had a racial bias because there have been no arrests made? There, I... As someone who has been talked to, as someone who has been pulled over on my bicycle by multiple squad cars, I wonder where, like, any real sense of community is? I wonder where, like, any sort of real sense of safety is? Because it seems like Lincoln is not interested. Because it is now December. And this twelve-year-old was beaten by a mob in your city limits in July on the biggest celebration of America Day, too, because racism is part of cultural bonding for white people in America. What's, what's the council doing about that? What, what are we doing to ensure the safety of our neighbors? Because it seems like there's been a lot of nothing. Because people have come down here and told you, have like, shown their heart to you, and we're still asking for movement? It is beyond revolting to like, beg a city to help someone who they claim to really care about. So many city council meetings talking about how great we are, oh, multicultural task force, whatever. What, what about like, the very culture of your city that leads a group of white adults? These were adults that thought, this is an okay action. We are going to chase down this group of children, get one of them, and then put him in the hospital. And then nothing happens here.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Maji Miller Jenkins, and I live in the East Campus area. And I have bloody hands, but you guys should have bloody hands. I want to acknowledge the fact that each and every one of you is complicit. You want to come testify with me? I want to acknowledge the fact...
Shh, my turn.
...that each and every one of you is complicit in the violence that's happening inside of our communities. Our city is not a safe bubble. We are not a multicultural haven of positive interactions. Yeah. I know that I've been criticized for coming up here and being extremely assertive in what I'm saying. So I'm trying to deliver this message to you in a way that you will digest it. I saw you on Sunday, Benny. You were present during our protest for Palestine. You know my face. I've seen you at multiple events. You chose not to come up and speak to me. You chose not to interact. Just like you all chose to vote yes on the Manzito Project on Snell Hill. That's modern-day colonization. This isn't some antiquated idea of some ancient society that we study of... Shh, free, free Palestine, yes. But it's not some ancient idea that we study in school. This is actual events that are happening in your city. I voted for you. I campaigned for you in my neighborhood, hard. I don't care that you have colleagues that you have to keep up a relationship with. We didn't vote for you so that you could be concerned about your colleagues. We voted for you so that you could represent us. Right? And I don't know if you've noticed, but we've been pretty dang consistent. A, a group of people has been here every week since February. Did you guys know that Israel dropped a bomb on Syria within the last twenty-four hours? That was so large, it registered on the Richter scale? Did you guys know that? Did you guys, do you know who Soul of My Soul is? Have you been paying attention to know who Reem is? And the man named Khalid, Soul of My Soul? Did you see? Did you see that Khalid was murdered today? He was assassinated. I spent three and a half hours in my bed sobbing this morning for a man half a world away that changed my life. You are in my city, changed my life. Do something that changes my life for the better. Stop approving the zoning on General Dynamics. Stop voting yes on colonization projects. This little face right here, those two little faces, these are your future. You want to know why I'm so passionate? Because I'm fighting for her and her and him. And every single child in this city that has to grow up and reap the consequences of the choices that y'all make. We've been coming here every week since February telling you facts, statistics, bringing you videos, bringing you articles, bringing you an abundant amount of evidence to prove that we are not safe in this city. This is the second time I've come here to testify about the twelve-year-old boy who was brutally, racially, mob assaulted in y'all's city. We have the queerest board. We, as the voters, we did everything right. We have the most democratic board. We have the queerest board. We have done, we have voted in a blue mayor. We did everything you told us to do. You told us, show up, we'll listen to you. That's a damn lie. We have showed up every week since February, and you don't listen. You're not hearing us. You're not paying attention. I have to have conversations with my eleven-year-old about why skinfolk ain't kinfolk because your napkin-headed selves are selling out to more colonization, and it's disgusting and infuriating with a background in sociology and forestry between the two of you? You can't rec- you can't recognize that a bomb that is big enough to register on the Richter scale has an ecological effect on the world? You can't register that genocide victims live in your neighborhoods? Live in your communities? And they deserve to be heard? To be seen? To be valued? How dare you all? Like, it is so frustrating to be here as a mom and speak to so many people that have children, are around children, and you literally actively ignore us. That'll be my time, and then my son would like to have a time. So if you could reset the clock. Hold on, you have to wait until it says zero. Now it's your turn. Tell him your first and last name.
Um, my first name is Edward, my last name is Jenkins. Um, I just want to have a few seconds to tell you that murders in Palestine have been going on everywhere, everywhere, not even just Palestine, longer than that. Little ones younger than her are being bombed. Bombed and not, and y'all are just ignoring that. Y'all are just ignoring that, saying, s- just saying nothing about it. Saying nothing about it, not showing the world nothing because y'all want to hide that. Y'all want to stay the president, you'll want to stay the top person. But one day, someone will come up and take your spot, and they will be proven to be the actual first person to actually care about this world. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening who'd like to address council? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Eld Stinky. I'm going to waive my address for safety. I moved to Nebraska from South Carolina, my home state, in twenty twenty. Growing up, I heard many stories of how progressive the North was, about how people go there to have a better life to this day. So when I was nineteen, I put what I could in my car and I came up here. And I am deeply disappointed and saddened that the opposite is true. That the progressivism of the North was a lie. The benevolent Yankee liberal participates in the same white supremacist rhetoric and actions that the men down south waving Confederate flags do. And the fact that a white person from the South has to come up here and tell you that allowing the anti-blackness to get to this point is out of control, that should eat you up inside, especially those among you affected by anti-blackness in your daily lives. For a red state, saving the children is clearly not a priority. Outcomes for children in America are getting worse and worse with each and every generation. The most unprotected group in all of society is children. Children have the fewest rights among them out of any group of human beings. And the fact that we are going into twenty twenty-five, and this fact still rings true, breaks my heart into more pieces than I could ever describe. My hope is that you will do better. I fear that you won't. But my hope is that you will. Because when I left the South, I truly felt like there was nothing I could do for the folks around me there, that I couldn't do anything to improve their material conditions. And I came up here and I got involved with people who believe in improving material conditions for those around them in their daily life. And I see that these networks are spreading across the country, and that does give me a glimmer of hope that maybe communities everywhere will start to come together and will start to actually protect their children in a meaningful way rather than waging useless culture wars. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council this evening?
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move adjournment.
I'll second it.[1749.68]